Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Well, first I want to say thank you for holding that board down last month. And welcome to the new members.
Thank you.
Um, our first item is to review and approve the minutes of May.
Actual move.
Second.
All those in favor? Is everyone? Okay, and the next item is continue uh continue the discussion on acting on the subdivision ordinance update. Do you want to start with the the definition or you want to dive into the?
Um, I'll just hit real quick and that is after the last meeting, I was a little less than impressed, I think, with the way that we've gone through the ordinance and the errors that we found at a thousand feet. Or maybe even thirty thousand feet.
Okay.
Things like the county being wrong or whatnot. So I took the entire next day and peeled through what we had looked at at the last meeting and then I forwarded all of those changes. So it was a lot of red ink on the ordinance. Some of it was formatting or whatnot, some of it was Oxford comma, which all matters. Um, and so I asked her to make those changes. Jean found other things. Um, so she made most of the changes that I asked for, some she did not make. Um, and then there were changes that we discussed last meeting that Jean ordered weren't done in the draft. So we're gonna go back through the draft tonight. Uh, but one of the things that I found, are you talking the definition?
Yes.
Is you go to the definitions at the end, the definition was sufficient. Well, try to define sufficient and then do use what was the other word that said see sufficient. Um, see. Sufficient was the this.
Adequate, appropriate.
Something with that. Suitable. Does it, the definition?
Yes.
Sufficient was what it was. So if you want to zero in on that, that's on page forty nine. And then the next uh word is suitable and it says referred to sufficient. So not only a little cyclical thing, but the definition of suitable, I don't, but the definition of sufficient, all suitable isn't sufficient in the ordinance, I don't think. So I had reached out to her and said, you know, uh does one need to define sufficient or suitable? And if they knew it isn't what was here, because that's what constitutes around the um ordinance. So she replied back with three different options as to how you would want to move forward and whatnot.
And also under adequate and appropriate in the definition says referred to sufficient. So.
Oh.
Yeah. Do you want opinions or how we want?
This is your ordinance. I just wanted to give a little bit of background as to how you are looking at this ordinance that's re marked up with more than what we talked about last week.
As far as the definition of sufficient, um, I feel like that that number one is the best one. Um, I would not remove the definition and I don't like the third one going into sufficiency because that's kind of like sufficiency according to Webster's sufficient means to meet one's needs. So it's kind of repetitive into sufficient. I think sufficient needs to be defined. So I like the first one. That's my opinion. Anybody else have any opinion about it?
Well, suitable. Suitable to cool. Good. I mean, that word or those words or those three words can lock up a lot of different things. If somebody wants to, we we want something a little tighter than that so that it's, you know, it's stronger. So it's like, you know, if this ordinance is to be in place, it will be not sufficient. I mean, that almost looks like you're kind of getting, you know, I don't know. It's not strong enough. I don't feel like, I don't feel like any of them are really strong enough. I think there might be a better word there.
Well, that would be why the definition is so important.
Right.
I agree with the first one. It does denote that it meets or exceeds.
The minimum.
The minimum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that clarifies that it's a greater me.
Anybody else have any?
Right, I agree with.
Caroline.
Caroline.
She's the one who came up with, you don't have anything?
No, I think uh it would be nice to have more definitions. It would help the applicant out. It would help us out, you know, in the long term when it's time to finalize the project. It really would. So it'd be a matter of if Melanie, what she would come up with if she's willing to do something more.
So you think we need more than more?
More clarification, right.
So in my reading list, I mean, like number one, but it needs to be more specific. Something a little bit more definitive.
I'm, I'm pretty good with that. It's condition standard or amount that it meets or exceeds a minimum level necessary to ensure compliance with this ordinance. Protect that, you know, I'm, I'm good with that, but if there's something, be more specific, I'd be open to it for sure. But I'm thinking maybe she could look into other words that need to be defined.
Right. And anything like if uh if this was to end up in court, you know, we're doing the whole lawyer thing, that way it works better for them.
And writing.
Right.
Yep.
Um, it's very fair.
Yeah, because I, I saw this and then I document searched to see, okay, well, where is this being used? And it wasn't always used in the same way.
Well, that's interesting.
Right. But I think that, I mean, if you're gonna use the word, uh, what if we have adequate, then maybe ever adequate should be replaced with suitable as opposed to say adequate defines a suitable.
Well, you have sufficient.
Right. You know.
Yeah. Yeah, you shouldn't use a word and then say it's defined by the other word.
Right.
I mean.
Right.
Should have.
They just use it.
For it, yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes.
When meet standard requirements, we did.
That seems great when you say that, I guess. I mean, could you? Yeah, um. It kind of leaves it out to interpretation at the end, you know?
Yeah, the standards are not defined somewhere.
That's really the suspicion is really just saying you just meet, it's, it's enough, but it's not more than enough.
Right.
It's similar to the site plan review ordinance where it says you must have a substantial start construction. Well, is that by the day you've got all of them around? Because some people have substantial. Or do you expect to see structure more? What? And that's great, definitions were the best.
So do we want to send this back to her before we decide?
I, I don't think this is wrong.
Right, yeah, um, okay. Alright.
See if she can give us some particular language to consider and then.
Open just something stronger, you know, so it's, alright, we got it. We got there. That's it. Nothing that can jump over the fence. Just a word. But hey.
So are we gonna go page by page or do you wanna just speak about things we found or?
I go page by page.
Okay.
Just. I'm gonna do anything that we thought they were all on the same page, so to jump around.
Sounds good. Okay. So does anybody have anything on page seven?
No.
You on page eight?
The only thing I have here for additional clarification under section one eight, number four mentions the Department of Transportation. This is the main Department of Transportation of the United States that are in transportation.
Ah.
So that is the subsequent part of the certification stuff.
So you asked for that last time too?
Yes.
Okay, page nine. Page ten. You keep going.
Yeah, you guys have a very, we can restart back again at the next meeting.
Weekend, okay. Alright, on page eleven. Page twelve. Page thirteen. I'm gonna slow down if anybody.
This one's a paid founder.
Huh?
It's a paid founder, two hundred foot.
And the next one is, yeah, page fourteen.
Page twelve, there are two five two. Land which is part of a right of way or easement and cleaning utilities. So it's saying that we're not gonna approve the purpose of meeting the lot size. So we're saying that if they have a right of way, we gotta take that portion out and then subtract that from their lot. And they can build on it. That's how I'm reading that. How are you guys taking that?
Which we obviously know.
Yeah.
Ah.
Because that's, you know, there's quite a few laws that have right of ways and.
Two five eight two.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I know. Well, that is in the subdivision. You're thinking that shouldn't be?
Well, I'm thinking there's a lot of lots that, uh, you know, have right of ways for utility lines or, you know, another driveway to go through, I guess. Are we gonna have to go through and calculate that and take that out and, you know, withhold somebody from developing a lot?
The state has driven, granted grace through quite a few instances.
Right.
Well, uh, as I was thinking of a subdivision, I, I would think that the utilities would be, uh, have their own way into it. I mean, I, I don't know each, are they talking?
Some will have to access from the actual road, in fact.
You. I don't think it's unreasonable to include the right of way easement.
Right, that's why.
When you talk about utility easement, that seems like a little bit of a calculated stretch.
Right.
Like how are we gonna, oh, it's a bit of a power pole.
Yeah.
How do you quantify that in terms of, so maybe we would be excluding utility easements?
Be reasonable.
Maybe a good right of way, somebody's gonna camper going down over your property probably should be considered as not part of your block because it's developed.
And that's a good notation.
So excluding utility easements? You want to vote on that or we not?
I just get consensus as to whether I get or don't like it or.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think it makes sense.
Yeah.
So that brings up a little bit of a thought. We talked about picking that lot frontage from two hundred down to one fifty. If you had a possible easement like that, you're gonna hook and you're gonna start with a smaller piece. And then you may wanna, then you may need some room on one side for a septic, the other side for a well if we're not in public. And then you gotta have some much room between properties, right? So I just kind of, I mean, I just kind of, oh, with the last few days, just been mulling out, reading that again on whether we really should knock that down to one fifty.
Oh, we don't have a frontage, you know, of road frontage, but you could have a lot of property in that. It's just not on the road frontage.
Right.
So it really that part of that would, would fall under if you have a pro, if your lot's big enough to have a septic and a well and built. Right?
What happens when you're in town where it's town water, town sewer, town everything, like my subdivision I did with Joey.
Yeah, but this, this is, this is talking about single family residents or a hundred fifty feet of road frontage, right? And then on page fourteen F, it's saying the subdivision of the land shall provide all the building lots have a minimum frontage of two hundred feet. And um, and it seems just, I don't know. I think it should be consistent one way or the other.
Agreed.
You know? I actually thought she was gonna leave to look to see if there was a reason that she had put that.
Well, didn't we knock that down?
We did knock it down, but she didn't change it.
Oh. Okay.
So she made more changes than what we'd asked for. Because here, here it says, uh, minimum frontage of two hundred feet and then she struck on her road.
And she listed consistent with all other licenses.
Maybe we'll look at the actions. We didn't have anything proposed in that and I did not ask for changes in that.
Just the difference.
She made additional changes in that side. Oh. Would we, excuse me, would we like it reduced to one fifty still if it's allowable?
I don't recommend that you do because of the smaller loss in the order law.
Yeah, I, I would say it's, yeah.
And, and I knocked a pop on my ear, but what are the ramifications for currently moving? But it's a minimum frontage of two hundred feet. And it used to say a minimum frontage of two hundred feet when it goes.
I think it should be on a road.
It should be, it should say road frontage on it because what are we using for, like, what are we using for the minimum? It's a definition. What are we comparing it to? Are we saying short frontage now? Are we saying?
Right, it should say.
Side, yeah. Side set back.
But the, all of this two point six lots is referencing out of the Norwich Water District, so it wouldn't be in town. Yeah. Anything else on page fourteen? Page fifteen? Page sixteen? I mean, we need that work. I don't like the, they don't really string for those schools of those up them.
Right.
Um, two point one one C, uh, D, I'm sorry. Affluent is a liquid waste, uh, waste for sewage discharge.
All.
See, why you be putting that in a stream?
You're right with it.
I don't know if affluent really has a, um, real definition as to it's illegal at that point and it's been claimed at that point to be released, kind of like our water district, our wastewater district where it's affluent going back out into the river.
I think that's what they call it.
Yeah, it is, but I'll tell you, I, we used to do V O visa where I worked at a lab and the affluent that came in, uh, was not anything you'd want to put in the stream.
Oh, sure.
I mean, it did treat it, but I'll tell you. I just, I just don't want, you know. Is there a definition for affluent in here?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
You know, it would sound.
So.
I remember seeing that and I think it's, it seems like it's referring to stormwater affluent. But it's not clear, like you said, it's clear that it's stormwater, it was, okay, it doesn't specify.
So we need to add a definition of that fluid?
Yeah.
I mean, even if it is stormwater, do you really want to talk about the availability of streams? All it's gonna do is break costs for something.
Hmm.
Or be a part of the stormwater management plan.
Could be, um, retention ponds as well, you know, things like that. But I think that would be covered through D E P instead of us.
Yeah, I remember you were talking about the slope and the event affluent, so.
Yeah, because affluent isn't just wastewater. No, yeah. There's a lot.
Right.
It's quite a variety, but I think it's gonna.
I mean, like they down to school, they build their own ponds like that's around the, where they really get pocket off. They, they don't know what the hell to do with it. I mean, they try to, they make a mess, like that's gotta look, they wash the work out every few minutes. Around that scowl around the hospital parking lot there, that's, that's the reason, that's gets so screwed up because.
So if you had, if you had affluent discharge from a new home that was in subdivision, that would be absolutely a violation, right? Something new.
Well, I don't know what you would have being discharged from a new home.
Well, some people just let their gray water go some backup. That would be on, someone doing that. Some people don't hook their gray water into a septic tank.
So you can bypass going to the tank and you can go straight to the leach field on that.
That's right.
But it has to go to a field. They can't just go. Yeah.
Great drive.
Right.
You could still do that and you put that gray water in the leach field?
Yes.
But.
I get it, it doesn't sound.
But I would, I would just end it though.
No.
Because you're gonna have more solids in your tank and fuck it up.
Wouldn't influence also be like, um, like in my father's house. Uh, got a stream running through there because it's clay being pumped out all the time. Wouldn't that also be a fluids? You know, your uh floor drains or whatever it is in your cellar. Wouldn't that also be considered?
I, I will, I will, but according to Webster's, liquid waste or sewage discharge.
Liquid waste. I'd consider something running across my cellar as liquid waste.
Cellar, I guess. I don't know. I, you, you pump out the basement, is that it?
Oh, it's the.
I mean, a lot of cellars, they have cellar drain run dead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you have.
Over on like two oh one, I repaired a, a six inch drain line. He had a three inch water water coming right out of the cellar because he built his alcohol spring.
Oh.
Okay, and it goes under two oh one, right, and dumps directly into a stream. So what do you call a fluid? I mean, uh, the stuff you're pumping out of your cellar that's gonna flood your cellar?
Like cer- certain drains you can have dump outside. It's gotta go on a rock area to get filtered out and then go wherever it's gonna go. So certain things, um, are allowed to be dumped out. You know, anything that has human waste in it, obviously can.
But that's not what it's saying. Doesn't call for human waste.
Well, that's why we define affluent now.
I, I, mine not to the worst step here, because this is your ordinance, but I would almost, I would get rid of D in terms of using streams for affluents. And then it's really a matter of C, it is the slope of the land and its effects on affluent as far as it runoff or is it something else? Because it's under the bullet point of pollution.
Yeah.
Which indicates that we're using this for.
To get rid of pollution, but the take.
It won't result in undue water or air pollution and you must at least consider the availability of streams to dispose of.
Yeah.
And replace the pollution. That, you know, affluents with pollution. And, and just, I think we want that stream.
I don't think so. I agree.
And that's what's the matter with A. What's, what's the slope of the land and its effect on affluents? Is it because of leach fields or is it because of runoff or?
A combination.
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to give, you know, when you look and consider, is it gonna cause undue water or air pollution? It was like, oh, there's enough slope there, so it's just gonna.
Just be there.
Or I don't, I don't, I don't even know why this is here to be quite honest.
Really, I don't think that it really is something for the playbook, do you? I think it's more of a
like you said.
Or you probably. When you start. You know, and we're talking about a new home, it's gonna be.
Right.
If it's a new home, a new subdivision, it's gonna be.
Yeah, we're gonna have a design separate.
It's gonna be designed and it's gonna be proper.
Well, if we could, but if we got rid of D and had her explain what she's trying to say in C or, or we drag it or get, get rid of that.
Get rid of the whole.
Get rid of.
The view of current area of things, yeah. Because I just, I mean, I wouldn't think that it would even come up.
Because there's a, a separate section for the stormwater, correct? Yeah, yeah, it's.
Because subdivision, that stormwater runoff would have to be drafted anyway in your plan thing.
Right.
What are you gonna do with it?
Right.
What do you think about getting rid of that?
I wouldn't get rid of the pollution. It doesn't have to keep it in. Gives us something to investigate if there is a problem, uh, the case a lot away from us.
Well, what about leaving number one line and then getting rid of the expand, expansion of the means of? That's why, is I think in our site plan review, it always gets a little sticky when you talk about recent management expansions.
Right.
And regulation that would give you more.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Just leave that. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution.
Perfect. I like it.
Yeah, remove that.
Yeah, that's right, no.
No. We, I, we've been caught up on things like this before and.
Yeah, that's good. Alright, page seventeen.
Well, sixteen, you have the sufficient water. That's like one of them.
Who are you looking?
Oh, at the bottom of sixteen, you have sufficient water. So that would be the need to have that.
Sufficient, yeah.
Sufficient, yeah.
I don't want to overreach. I don't want to digress about when we talk about pollution and things like that, we have subdivisions where people are now earning in camps and holding tenants. pollution and things like that, we have subdivisions where people are now earning in camps and holding tents and things like that. Is there a pal to say if you were going to have a place where you can sleep well and that you would require in a subdivision, a subsurface? Or, I don't know.
Or pumping plan?
Right, or, you know, I don't know. But. People have.
Don't they have to meet the requirement anyways?
For any of, or a part of.
Like if you've got a big bedroom, you're gonna have to. How could you put in a whole week that now? So you're right on that, but what do you say about if they bring in a camper or whatever?
Oh, and should go into their subject system.
Right, and people don't want to help you out for the sector system, then most of the time, what it is, we ask them to do a, a plan for pumping.
Yeah. If they want to, and after you leave. Then you got the water running.
Is there a definition there?
Well, it is defined by a statement.
Oh, really? That's, that's where you can really it begins to learn from you.
I'm not that we have to do something with it now.
Yeah, on page twenty six, it talks about five systems.
So that does do it, right? B one. Sewage disposal shall be private subsurface wastewater disposal systems or private treatment facility. The surface of the side, then the last one, holding tanks or, or toilets.
Page eighteen? Nineteen?
I just had one item that I had asked for clarification, and it was made, but in number twenty, paragraph two. If the planning board requests technical assistance from the Bureau, the Bureau shall respond within five working days. Who's the Bureau? It's the Bureau of Forestry, the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Foresting. But the ordinance is gonna require that they respond to us within five days, and I don't think that we can require.
We can't tell them what to do.
So I just don't know why that's in there, if we can exclude something that's necessary, then.
Yeah. So just take out that first line, leave the rest or?
The planning board may request technical assistance from the Bureau.
Okay.
Here it, if the Bureau agrees, and then do the rest of it.
Okay, yeah. Everybody good with that? Page twelve? Are you clear? Page five? That's without the, um.
Formative?
Yeah.
They didn't look. Yeah, that's actually where our, our sentences fit.
Yeah. Page six. So, uh, number three, sewage pattern, is this spelled right? Is it the man, or like the one? Twenty seven? I have a question on three point one oh. I just wondered, at the end of this, it says the planning board for we not require the alternate arrangement to exceed a period of five years. What, what does that? Why is that?
My guess is that it would have to do with the fact that after five years, the town would then be responsible for finding the waste plant. I don't think this is, this is a cookie cutter. Because we're unique and that we don't have a municipal solid waste facility. Right?
Yeah.
We have unlimited access to the private facility. Uh, so it's always just gonna be assumed that.
So taking care of.
Right.
So does we even need that in there? That sentence?
I would leave it, only because if by some freak thing, something fell apart with the, uh, I bring them to him in place now.
Okay, yeah.
It's really not applicable unless that happens.
Okay. Right? Page twenty eight?
In one, um, four one D, in the world's activity, but it took out panel engineer.
I saw that.
And when we look at what we might want as a bond. Always guaranteed, it seems like you may want to be able to utilize them as a resource. But I don't understand why that would be excluded, so do we want to put that back in?
I think that would be the idea. So we know it's.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Page twenty nine? Thirty? And? Forty two? There's three? Uh, B, I'm not sure. She changed sewage to sewage. But then she calls it a subsurface sewage disposal system.
So the sewage is the product. The sewage is persistent.
So I looked up sewage and it said it was what the sewage is put into. Like the manhole on the, of having, but. It said I use to interchange me, but they're not supposed to.
Right.
I just, I just didn't think she consistently used it.
It would use the water, sewage.
Right, it's the actual thing that goes into.
Right.
But even with the sewage system, it seems like, I don't know. Either way, it's just.
In A, I had sewer, overboard discharge sewer, is sewage. I mean, there's a technical difference, which is why I asked for this.
I just I, I don't know, I just wondered about, it just didn't seem necessarily, I, I don't have fault that should change it so much as it's not insistent.
I'll level that, I'm, because I've got a red mark here, I'm sewer for the, or A for the.
Now, thirty four? Thirty five, um, um, B, um, I just think that, um, it says the time of submission of the subdivision plan shall be the official submittal date. And at this point, we're talking about the final plan, I think that you should say the final, the time of submission of the final subdivision plan will be the official submittal date. Page eighty? Thirty six? In H, uh, municipals change the town, but then municipal appears again in the borderline. And so this should be changed to town as well, I would think. Same town treasure.
Again, on seven two, it, I mean, there was a change of statute, but keep rates, five full-sized paper coffins. Because we don't need my hearts, we want to the big guys.
Right.
But what's a full-size paper copy of the subdivision?
Right, legal letter size, I have no idea, there's nothing that stipulates that that I'm aware.
So what do we want to see? Well, do you know what the registry will record of the max?
I do not.
Because we probably ought to have one of those. And we want probably a plan.
Right.
Full-size roll plan.
Right.
Okay, so I've got that tax question. I'll, so, I'll go registry and find out, but they need it to be filed then.
Thirty seven? Thirty eight? Uh, and B in thirty eight, it says if the appointed engineer or CEO shall find a con inspection, so does that give us an engineer? You know, we were concerned about the town engineer before.
Well, I see. This is for inspection purposes.
Okay, so you still want the both of them, right?
We, I think so.
Yeah.
I think it'll largely depend on scale of subdivision, if you're putting in a hundred lot. Subdivision, you might wanna call on that guy, I don't know.
Right.
That gonna happen to.
Yeah. Thirty nine?
For thirty eight, I noticed there's quite a few municipal references that have not changed town, is there a reason for that?
Municipal officers?
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's
That has to.
That's correct, yeah.
That's the select board. But that's the binding statute.
Forty?
Well, I guess just for conversation, seven dot five expiration of permit. A permit granted under this ordinance shall expire if the worker payment involved does not commence within one year of the date of issuance. So you know, what do you do? You just go out and throw a shovel full in there, or is anything more definitely?
I would say it definitely needs to be more defined, especially when it comes to subdivision.
Yeah, sort of.
So what do we want, like?
Sixteen.
And that will be our.
Right, yeah. You know, compared to, oh, only around, like you said earlier, did they actually put a foundation in, you know, a foundation to me is a substantial amount of money that they've already.
Maybe it's a, a percentage of the project.
There's a part of me that said maybe they should. They, they lose their subdivision if they don't have all the lots pinned within twelve months, or something like that. Or do they, they have to have that already?
They have to, yeah, they.
So we want to require them, this can't require them to build, so what else can we look for? Road construction?
That would be helpful.
Pushing, driveway installation, or, or which is the problem?
So if you're, if you snag them, when you split that up and on the lot, and then went back, they're pretty good.
Right, but if there's gonna be an expiration to a permit. To issue the subdivision, what removes that expiration? Is it gonna do that you built your road in? That your roads are complete within twelve months, or? Is that really all you could expect? Or or do you just wipe it out? Because if they have to have a pin in order to come to you folks. It could just be a failed subdivision, necessarily.
So don't, don't they come in and have to give you some kind of a the phases of project, you know, first phase is we're gonna put in a road immediately, or maybe phases or?
Phases to come see you folks is three phases, but yeah, as far as.
Should the project kind of go along some? Shouldn't the project kind of go along some similar to that?
Yeah, because if some don't put a road in, it just got the bold way.
Right, right. Right?
Then they get mad, take it out after about twenty years, the town's out.
My subdivision in Skowagon was, uh, met all requirements. When I put in six water taps, sixteen sewer lines, six meters, I mean.
Right.
That was pretty substantial, but not at one inch of ground has been touched.
But you had all of that installed within a period of time?
Yes.
Do you think that's reasonable?
Was that required in the subdivision?
While they were paving the road, it would have been a five-year long.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Okay, but they didn't give me a deadline to have it in, but I just had to be in before.
Right.
The road. Okay, um, and like saying, oh, we've got to put in a road or whatever. You're at the mercy of when's this construction company going to do it? Okay. Or if you had two miles of road to put in or something like that, they may not get to it for a year.
I don't know, yeah.
Going to be a, a damage issue like that.
So if we come to eleven months and third, twenty-nine days, can we come back in and ask for an extension of our permit granted by the planning board?
I think.
Probably under the waiver. Yeah.
If, if like what you were saying about the road, though, they could come in and tell us that we hired this company, but they can't get to it until, you know, maybe that would be. I don't know if it's the roads or what, or if it's, I think something should be, but I'm not sure what.
And you never know how much paperwork gets held up in getting permits to put in a road or anything like that. Or a driveway or.
You're going to have all of that in order to be able to get your subdivision approved.
Yeah.
So now we're talking about subdivision permit.
Being, yeah, starting with.
Being constructed.
Constructed, yeah.
Yeah, I know with my experience working on the utility end for construction, the roads were always the last things fully completed for the large developments.
Check on her.
Do you think what that's been heard about?
Well, at, at, at the point of getting the permit granted, they've already really paid some dollar bills to get engineering studies done and all that. You know, permits, survey, per test, all that stuff to see if they could even do it. So I would say that's one thing that they've already started. So then you got to. What we're asking is, is we want to see something else happen in that year.
I know in my subdivision, that was over three grand just to the service.
You know, one of the subdivision that's taking priority.
Somebody's already paid that before they come to us, right?
Just.
That's all done, because they got to bring it to us and say, okay, this is all right.
Well, if they've given a bond or something like that, we, they have X amount of time before we will, if it's not completed, we will.
Guess.
Take bond and.
Right.
I mean, it's not as my concern, but for a town who's already don't want a subdivision that's permanent, and then you end up with paper streets, which means that the streets only exist on paper. And that you don't actually have them cut in. And that is maybe a, you know, maybe it's gravel accessible that's constructed instead of a paved way.
You have to put it in the air.
I don't know, but we can ask for suggestions, and maybe she can reach out to other people, and we can revisit this.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If you want to, if not, we, honestly, if not, then we should probably just remove it, because if we don't expect that they're going to be doing anything, and then what they've invested in already is enough. Then why, why would a subdivision permit expire? Because really all it is about is getting the approval and filing it at the registry of deeds. And that is a matter of, are they motivated to sell lots or develop some lots or? I know with just so many towns, it's all over the place regarding that one thing. It's very great with all, with what other planning boards have come up with.
I would remove it personally, because you, there's a lot of, many things could happen to postpone something happening.
Another COVID.
I mean, I just spent two years dealing with unstable league. And so my property is going and it's been setting in.
What do you think?
I think we ask for help. All right, it's one of those things that, um, there's no clear definition with other towns. I just think that, uh, if you do take it out of there and somebody starts hacking up, you know, a piece of land up there and there's nothing for us as a town to say, you need to start commencing work again, or we have nothing to hold them accountable.
I used to live in Arkansas and the economy there tanked and it still tanks and still bad. And you have these half-built subdivisions and apartment complexes.
They're terrible.
Yeah.
Looks like hell.
Yeah, it does.
Somebody go in there and stuff it, piles of stuff.
Well, why don't we get some suggestions from her and revisit it? Uh, forty-one. On D, I'm not sure, left down, um, work line from the end of it, listing the court and says a court, municipality, municipality and municipal planning board. Should that be the town?
Yeah.
Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Do you want to know three definitions too?
Um, I just saw forty-five, my, I had a tag, it's complete application for the final, complete application. I just felt like that was defined already, or this about.
Yeah.
Should it be taken out?
I agree. There's, there are. Perhaps you can come up with some, a list of words that you'd love to find.
And then under road, they spoke road, but brief is the more prevalent word throughout the ordinance. So I don't put challenge towards to incorporate that, but I made a note there. They need to find subdivision, some division. And I'm a little bit of a Western person, because I feel like this needs to be incorporated into applicability to start supporting some of that.
Yeah.
That I had for those notes. From bad room, but to that break, everything about possibility of removing it. Don't forget that building with their subdivisions was not.
It's not just.
Just land something. So it could be that I want to construct a new building and a permit for five units. You don't want to have a threshold in there for them to move on that.
Right.
So I was thinking about that when we were talking, I was from the land.
We're just thinking, yeah.
But. So I'm going to know for land can build implications, whether it's.
I think that subdivision definition is repetitive. It is in the ordinance. Okay. Forty-eight. Forty-nine, that's sufficient, but already. Well, after that, though. The other business? Friends, yeah.
So the only thing is that Gene and I kind of thought already, but this is difficult to get together in the summer. Tendatively, your next meeting will be August before the week, at six o'clock. So skip the July meeting unless we get our application. And then we get back in August, or maybe even September, um, depending on progress or anything that comes in from the outside. But I, we understand that summertime is a difficult time to meet, and it wants to be in, maybe you could be out there through these types of months. So we'll keep in touch well ahead of those meetings to let you know, plan on eight fourteen, six o'clock.
I got down, scoured the world with the shooting range, and you don't want it to be.
Um, I haven't heard, so since I'm.
It probably caused a little accident from the name of it.
Well, it was indoor.
Very.
So where are the earnings?
What? Yeah.
I know, but, I mean, some people.